At this time, I'll call the April 26, 2018 meeting to order for Dixon County Commission. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Chamberlain is away at another meeting this morning, so I'll be chairing our meeting. We do just have one addition to our agenda, and that's in regards to the Sheriff's Department making a purchase for investigative camera videos. And with that, I'll move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second it.
We have the motion and the second for approval of the amended agenda. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll go ahead. Laverne, on Commissioner's comments.
Consent agenda.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
We'll do that consent agenda, and that is the minutes of the April 19 meeting, and fund expenditures of $214,856.43, and I move that we approve that consent agenda.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we'll hear your -- we've given you more time to prepare your comments.
Okay, well, I have a lot of comments.
Oh, okay.
Tuesday afternoon, Brad, John Golf, and myself went to Columbia, Missouri, and we attended a criminal justice and detention facility seminar. And this was sponsored by vendors, and I want to make it clear that the seminar didn't cost us anything. The meals didn't cost us anything, and they did feed us very well. But the program then started yesterday at eight o'clock, and we had a lineup of what I would call the elite people in the business of architects and builders and suppliers that build jails. And I guess one of the first things they brought out was how that industry has changed through the years. There used to be numerous companies that built jails, and how so many of them have either gone out of business or just quit. And so the ones that are left, some of them are probably better than others, and I guess they were trying to stress that you do want to go with companies that provide good product for you, because in the long run, using good companies that will stand behind and guarantee their products, and you know that they're going to still be in business in the future and those type of things. And it's something that you don't think about too much, but it really did hit home, I think, that they felt like, like you say, there, you know, when you -- the steel doors, the locks on the doors, and those type of things, you know, there is a difference in companies and how good quality and how long they're going to last. There also was a speaker there that talked about the modular steel cells, and we have talked to Larry about that, you know, that it's the advantages of those. And the company from Georgia that is probably the premier builder of those that was there had a semi there with a couple of them on the semi that we actually got to inspect. And I think that's kind of important that you actually go and see those products before you decide to purchase. And the time with the modular cells, their complete unit when they come, the stool, the shower, it's built into them, all the plumbing, everything comes out the back of the stall, so all you have to do is just stack these or set them side to side, and it's a lot quicker than masonry, plus durability of it. I really thought the durability of them, you know, is probably one of the factors why you'd want to go that way. We had another -- actually Larry Goldberg was on the program, our architect that we had hired. And I felt like the industry respects Larry's opinion, or they wouldn't have put him on this program. I think he's highly respected by the industry, that he builds a facility that there's so many factors that you don't realize as far as efficiencies after you've built a facility that Larry has been in this business long enough that just staffing alone, the design of it could make a tremendous difference in the amount of staffing that you have to run the facility, and things like that, you know, that Larry's had the experience and knows how to lay these projects out, so that you have a cost savings after you get them built. And then we had several speakers that were selling different products. Technology, I guess, is a great thing, because it's just, there's new things coming out every day in this thing. It was a kind of amazing, well, just the amount of water that a jail uses, you don't think too much about that, but it's a company that they can set the amount of time that they can flush a stool, and the amount of water that the stool uses, and all these things. And when you look on your monthly bills, I'm going to see if we can't check into that a little bit more, just to see the amount of water that our jail uses. But they claim that we're probably using three times the amount of water per person that we should be using. And those, like I said, just the efficiencies of all those different type of things. And we got to visit with some of the people on the controls that control the amount of water that the shower used and those type of things. Our last speaker was kind of interesting, Michael Frost. And the first slide he put up there, and it's so typical, but the first slide he put up there said, "Jails, the new community mental health center." And he was talking about mental health and how the number of mental health institutions that states have now, and the numbers have dropped so much that these centers that used to take care of mental health patients, that there's, they've dwindled down so much, and those people now are ending up in jail, and how jails, how we have to deal with it. And like I say, it's, he showed some numbers that were just, it kind of blew your mind, the number of mental health people that we have in this country, and how many of those are actually in jails now instead of mental institutes. And it's really a shame, because somehow, we're going to, I think his whole point was, you know, how are we going to deal with it? And the kind of facility that we have right now, stairs, there's no way we can deal with it. Hopefully, the new jail, we'd have pods, and, you know, we'd be able to segregate different inmates, and maybe be able to do a little bit more as far as trying to help the ones that needed the help. And so, like I say, it was, I thought it was very good conversation, and like I say, it was, I think that was about all I, as far as the presentations, but it was late time we got home last night, so. But those, I think, like I say, it's important to go to some of those meetings ahead of time, and we have visited several jails, and like I say, it's, I think that was, that was the only thing that I had.
Okay. Next week, May 1st through May 3rd, is the Kansas County Commissioner Association Conference, and so we will not be having a meeting next Thursday, but that's going to take place in Wichita and give us a chance to get some updates on some issues and hear some legislative reports. This morning, I attended the Military Affairs Council Breakfast that was over at Junction City, and it's kind of a partnership with surrounding counties, as well as Junction City and Fort Riley. The speaker was General Wiggins, and really enjoyed his comments and appreciated those. He actually is, in retirement, has chose to live in the Chapman area, and so it was kind of interesting at the table conversation, and there were over 100 or so in attendance. In the table conversation, he was talking up Dixon County and some of the things here, and it's interesting to hear someone kind of give their perspective that maybe hasn't lived here for a while. And there were a few of them that thought maybe, there were a few that thought that the Brookville Hotel used to be a hotel there, and then the restaurant frontage came on, and so kind of gave opportunity to explain a little bit of the history of that, but was certainly welcome to hear how they promote our area. His comments, more specific, is that he is in charge, as far as the state is concerned, with military affairs, and talked about not just Fort Riley, but Smoky Hill, and McConnell, and Fort Leavenworth, and the importance that the military has. But he also kind of gave a reminder that other states are positioning themselves, even though we don't have BRAC now, it's pretty much the same. They're positioning themselves to have more troops for training, you know, in some other states, and so it's kind of competitive. And of course, there's many advantages that Kansas has to offer, but the economic impact and the numbers that he put out, when they even had some of their testing over there, and a lot of people, if you ever drove by, or you happened to be close to the area, you could hear that slight continual thunderstorm, but collapse of thunder without rain, they were doing those training exercises. And he mentioned when people came in, that all of the hotels were full, that they brought in people specific for that. Over at Salina, it was about a $10 million impact for the extra people that they brought in for training over there. And a lot of that doesn't always, isn't always brought out, but not only just from a national security standpoint and the things going on throughout the world, but the economic impact that we have. The other thing that I thought was rather interesting, and I hadn't heard this before, but it gives us something to think about as far as economic development here, is, and one of the advantages when you go to something like this, Emporia is actually bringing, arranging bus transportation from Fort Riley and having some introductory type, it's like a job fair, but they take them to the job fair, from those that are retiring from Fort Riley. And, you know, there's a few thousand every year that retire, and they take them down there and kind of showcase Emporia, and hire some of them on the spot. And, you know, he kind of likened it, that some of the values and respect that you have in the armed services are the same values that Kansans have, and how, you know, there's some, they like structure, they like stability, they like the openness that we have here. And so anyway, he just kind of mentioned it was, you know, quite an opportunity. And when we think about the needs of workforce development, not only in Dixon County, but throughout our state, you know, that's probably a natural connection there, because some of these people that are leaving the services or retiring, they certainly aren't ready to leave the workforce yet. And so, anyway, I appreciated hearing his comments. And he had positive things to say about Dixon County, and how much he enjoyed it here and chose to retire here after traveling the world, basically, in many places in the United States. So hunting was on top of, one of the top things on his list. So, okay, that's all I have on comments. Are there any comments from the public before we have the proclamation? Okay, otherwise, we'll go ahead with our proclamation. And I might mention, too, I guess, let's do this first, we could have put this on the consent agenda, but for payroll next week, since I live here in town.
Sure.
I'll need to come in and sign payroll, and then we can approve that on a follow-up. So I'd move that I be designated, since we aren't having a meeting next Thursday, to do that.
You have a second to motion.
We have the motion and the second. So Barb will get paid, and everybody else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, at this time, for our proclamation, the Hope Group, if you'd come up here, and we'll read the proclamation and have some comments from all of you, or one of you, or whoever's designated.
The Hope Center, 2018 Week of Emphasis proclamation, whereas it is a long-held value in American life and a strong Kansas tradition to support one's neighbors in times of need, whereas ongoing efforts to balance state and federal budgets and the resulting changes in programs to assist those in need continue to call for more involvement from the private sector to provide support and assistance to individuals and families whose circumstances may at times leave them without such basic needs of life as safe shelter, clothing, food, and medical care. Whereas the Hope Center was established in 1991 by persons from several organizations in our large community, help our people in emergencies is what the H.O.P.E. stands for. Whereas the Hope Center has for 27 years brought together the resources of our community to serve our neighbors in the times of need, seeking to fill the gaps between personal and family resources, assistance offered by the government agencies, and aid available from other charitable organizations, while at the same time stretching available help by eliminating duplication of services. Whereas all citizens should become more aware of the needs of their neighbors, of efforts within the community to address those needs in a caring and responsible way, and of opportunities to lend their support to these efforts. Now therefore, the Dixon County Commission does hereby proclaim the week of April 29th to May 6th, 2018, as Hope Center Emphasis Week. In Dixon County, recognize more than a quarter century of work of the Hope Center, and call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, and business to a greater recognition of the needs of their neighbors. And I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt this proclamation.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I have signed this, and we're glad to have you here again this year. And if one of you or your support, if all of you would want to make some comments, if there's anything you'd want to add, tell me, yeah.
I don't really have anything to add. We appreciate the opportunity for us to bring out this proclamation to you, and we keep on plugging along, doing the same work. We've not really been too busy, but it's starting to pick up with cold weather being over with and needs being needing to be met, so we appreciate all the support we get from the community.
So now, some individuals, I guess, stop at your office, and they're able to kind of tell you what their needs are, and you're able to assess it in a way to get some help for them.
Help, and if we can't, if we can't help them, now we do administer Salvation Army funds for the county, too. So, and that's more for other assistance that we could offer, such as transient assistance if need be, for people that have maybe moved here and they haven't lived here long enough to get help center funds. I can use Salvation Army funds, and we do, we started up the cattle drive in Dickinson County again two years ago, so that's what the funds are used for. And, yeah, they come to my office, and if we can't help them, I have other resources I can offer them if need be.
In your office, is that?
We're in the Sunflower Apartment Building, uh-huh.
And as a representative of churches, we were to try to work through the Hope Center to refer people. They can come back to us if they need help, but we like having somewhere central that we can work with, and we're not like all scattered all over the place.
Now, is there still, what, a temporary housing available?
The Hope House, mhm, yeah. And it's, a family can live there for three months, three months, or longer if need be, if we don't have any other applicants. It's usually pretty much occupied unless we're doing work on the house.
It's on South Cedar, same place that's, how long have we had that house? I don't know.
Ninety-five is when they took it over. We had, we were supposed to have a group of high school, high school kids out there.
Yeah, yesterday was volunteer day.
Yesterday, they were supposed to, yeah, they were supposed to do some landscaping and stuff, but I don't think it got done.
Darn rain, anyway.
Yeah, that's all right.
Well, thank you for all your work.
I'd just like to say, we appreciate, Teresa does a great job, and Teresa Wise are also volunteers down there, and the ladies do a great job, and, you know, it's not the easiest job, you know.
No, it isn't. Teresa, you've been there how long?
Um, let's see, I think I came on board in 2002.
Two, okay.
Well, I'd just like to comment that these type of things really make the community stronger, and like I say, there's a lot of people out there that in need, and if you can furnish these type of programs for them, it just makes a stronger community, and just appreciate your work you do.
Thank you for your volunteer.
I'll just say one more thing.
Yes.
We just could, wouldn't have any funds to, you know, to help folks if it wasn't for the generosity of the community. We get some United Way funds, but the citizens and churches step up and, and.
And the county, actually, we could say.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole county, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the whole county, right? So, I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And feel free to leave, but we do have another 10 minutes of entertainment here. Without any commercial breaks. Okay. Brad will hear your comments at this time.
Okay. Well, you heard a lot of what Laverne said, I would echo. I did attend, of course, the St. Joe similar meeting in St. Joe, Missouri, last year that was put on by Goldberg and Associates, and John and I both attended that, I think with Craig, and in comparison, this one was much better. The one thing that drives home, as we talked about in the work session on a project like this, you know, our community, us, you as commissioners, us as employees, we're only going to get one shot at this, this is a major project. And we don't want to do it and get it wrong. We want to make sure we get it right. So you want to make sure that, what they stress is want to make sure that the people that we rely on to do that work for us are quality people, and we do make sure we get it right. So I think we have, as Laverne said, I think we selected one of the best, if not the best architect firms, that specializes in detention and correctional facilities, and he certainly has the resources. It's one thing I'm impressed with whenever I'm in that setting with Larry, and having been at several now, that, and Laverne hit the nail on the head, he's well-respected nationwide, and those guys all know each other, they know him, and I'm very comfortable that our selection process worked when we did that here a couple of years ago, so. But moving forward, well, you know, for the agenda on the tent, you have the resolution to consider putting the question on the ballot again, and, you know, the project's been reduced down to what I hope the taxpayers will accept. And again, I think that process has worked, we've heard, and we'll just move forward. So it was a very good meeting, and even I got more information, having been involved in it my whole career, but having been involved in this aspect of it again for a couple of years. It was a very good meeting, so well worth the time. Today, the annual water festival is going on at Brown's Park, and I don't know how many kids we've got out there, although what I do know is all five of our county schools are attending this year. Last year, I think Harrington was not able to attend for whatever reason, so chances he was in during the work session mentioned, it's a little muddy out there in spots, and we all know what fifth grade kids do around mud, it's kind of attracted like a magnet, but I'm sure that they will have fun and it'll be beneficial, so if you do have time and want to, you're certainly welcome to come out and eat a hot dog for lunch, I'm sure that I have plenty, so. Other than that, we're continuing to work with the financial manager and our bond attorney to work out, you know, answer some questions and things on the project, the Justice for Jail project, and next week's the KCCA conference, so be another short week as far as being in the office, so it's about all of that.
Okay, thank you. And do you know, does Dunk have anything?
I have not heard anything from Dunk, so.
Okay, he may show up, so.
Now, I might add one more comment about, like I say, we have did a lot of evaluations as far as trying to come up with something that was maybe more appealing to the public to finance the jail project, and we have cut it back considerably, but like I say, we're going to try to utilize more of the existing courthouse, and I think Larry, like I say, he continues to come up with, when we ask him for a plan, he continues, comes up with, I think we're probably on at least six different plans here that I've kept hold of, but like I say, we're going to utilize as much space in the courthouse here as we can, and basically, like I say, we'll cut down on the sites that we will have to build new as far as the jail, and some offices for the sheriff. But like I say, hopefully, when we get the final figures, we can, is that, like I say, we, in my opinion, we've cut it back as much as what we possibly can, and still utilize all the space that we've got.
I did meet to that end, I did meet with Andrea earlier this week, I went over the current draft, and I met with Cindy Mack and went over the upstairs with her. They were both pleasantly happy. Got a couple tweaks in the hallway and doorway here, whatever, that would, in the end, be pretty important changes that we'll make, and I've sent those off to Kevin at Goldberg's Architects, but I meet with Gareth and his jail staff in the morning to go over the jail portion of it, but from everything I see, I think we're, they've got it down, and like Laverne said, we've really fine-tuned it, cut it back to where it would be difficult to achieve our goals. If, I don't know how we would do it any differently, to cut it back anymore, so we're in the process of waiting for Larry to come up with the price estimate on this, and then we'll move forward. But it's, I worked hard, and it's coming together, so.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move on to notices and communications. We have an invite here, Tourism After Hours. National Travel and Tourism Week is Thursday, May 10, and they have an RSVP if we would want to attend, that's going to go to the CVB by May 4, so we'll need to let Brad know if, or individually, we can call in, but it's going to be at the Eisenhower Presidential Library Reception, 5:30 to 7:00. And that's directed to the county. We also have our. We also have our county news, newsletter, and then also a Kansas Sheriff Magazine that is sent, and I didn't have anything else that anyone had called me on. Okay, under resolutions, we'll go ahead and do our agenda items first, and then we'll do the add-on. First thing under Business is to review and consider the approval of Section one zero five of the county policy dealing with equal employment opportunities. Brad, you want to summarize that?
Yes, this is just an upgrade to our policies that deal with us, us equally providing employment opportunities to candidates, and it's a rather lengthy policy, they have a page, so we go through those annually, all the policies, and review them, and this just makes some tweaks that match what legal staff has recommended, so the, the main policy, the intent of the policy really hasn't changed anything, so.
I, I read both the old policy and new policy, there's, a lot of the wording is different, but was there any particular change that you've seen in that, or?
No.
A lot of it's just the way it was worded.
The way it was worded, cleaned it up a little bit.
And procedurally, if anyone has any questions on equal employment opportunity, they would see?
Diane.
Okay, HR?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll need a motion for approval.
I'll, I'll move that we approve the Section one oh five of the county policy dealing with equal employment opportunities.
Second, any other discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. We have another housekeeping item here, and that is to review and consider the approval of Section six zero eight of the county policy dealing with anti-harassment policy.
This one is a little bit more detailed, it was originally put into place in two thousand and eight, and it was revised in two thousand and thirteen, and as we all know, one of the topics actually, at the conference next week, has to do with anti-harassment of employees, that's a, that's a big thing in the workplace now, but this one deals with discrimination between employees and harassment, things like dating, potential relationship between employees, and how those things are all dealt with, so it's a rather detailed policy, it's several places along, and it's working, you know, not only at the federal and state level, but county levels, and local municipalities, we need to have in place, so.
I'd move that we approve Section six zero eight of the county policy with, dealing with anti-harassment.
I'll second it.
Have the motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. The other item that we had, and this was added to our agenda, the Sheriff Department, for investigative purposes, want to go ahead and purchase some video cameras, and the amount on that was forty-six thousand one hundred and forty-three, and it will just enhance their ability as far as documentation and investigative procedures.
That's, that's another item that technology has changed so much in, and like I say, it's, it can be a real benefit, the amount of knowledge that can be stored now, and you never know when you need that information later, and, and like I say, it's, I think we're on a very fast track of keeping up with technology in that area, and it will benefit us, I think, in the future.
And Brad, the funding for this?
The funding for this, forty-six thousand dollars, will come from the Sheriff's Department's Asset Forfeiture Fund, and that is, those are funds that they, they have been awarded through the court system, that were taken off drug offenders, and they're typically proceeds, unexplained proceeds from, that they, that are seized. In other words, a typical scenario, somebody going down the highway that has a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars of unexplained wealth, and they do the, the investigation, find out that they're convicted of selling illegal substances, they will challenge that in court, the person that's taken from them has a right to come in and, and challenge as well, and nine times out of ten, the people will walk away from it because they know where that money came from, and they don't want to have anything to do with going to court about it, but they have been very successful on some of those cases over the years, and so the nice thing about it is, and the Sheriff mentioned this in your work session, that as taxpayers, this is the true, the true intent of asset forfeiture is two-pronged. One is to punish the people that are making, the, are benefiting from illegally selling drugs by taking away their assets, whether that's money, vehicles, houses, property, or whatever it is. You take away the, the money in a, in a business venture, and you kind of take the, take the fee up from underneath them. But secondly, it uses that, those proceeds and that wealth to fund the investigation of the people that are offending the law, and it prevents us, as taxpayers, from having to foot that bill. So this is actually one of the situations where the people that are committing a crime are paying for the investigation against themselves, so as taxpayers, it benefits us, we don't have to pay that forty-six thousand dollars, and it helps to combat the, the ongoing saga of the drug issue in that community, so.
So budget-wise, it really helps us because it doesn't involve property tax money?
It's zero impact on our budget, yes.
And there, yeah, and I might mention also, there was a lot, besides that, that this investigation with this type of camera system can, there's numerous other things, if there's...
Virtually any criminal activity.
Any criminal activity, right.
It's impressive, the storage ability now that they have with, for documentation.
And the connectivity to nationwide databases that are connected to that system, so it's not just, you know, criminals just don't reside here, and, and other places, they move back and forth, they're mobile, and we have to deal with those from everywhere, and vice versa, so.
Okay, I would move that we authorize the Sheriff's Department to purchase these video cameras for the amount, estimated amount of forty-six thousand one hundred, one hundred forty-three dollars.
I'll second it.
We have the motion in the second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. If we don't have anything else, I'd move we adjourn.
I'll second it.
We have the motion in the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.